At 6:30 PM, I call to order the meeting of the Gladstone Planning Commission on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, meeting here at Gladstone City Hall, 525 Portland Avenue. Tammy Bannack, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Milch?
Here.
Let's stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to this meeting of the Planning Commission. Tonight on our consent agenda, we will approve the minutes of last month's meeting, and after that, we'll accept business from the public if it's unrelated to the matters coming before us on the agenda later. And then we will, under our regular agenda, we will hear the monthly planning report from Joy Fields, our planner. We will have a public hearing on some proposed text amendments related to zoning matters regarding accessory dwelling units. And then we'll have a discussion of our annual work plan. Next month, we have a meeting scheduled with the City Council, a joint work session, to discuss our work plan for the year, and we'll do some planning on that this evening. And then we also have time for business from the public at the end of the meeting before we hear from the commissioners on any business items they'd like to bring before us, and then we'll adjourn. So, we'll begin with the consent agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the January 21st meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
And does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion that we approve the minutes?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as-
I'll second it. All right. Commissioner Langston moves approval of the minutes. Commissioner Pat Smith has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Do we have any business from the audience, from the public?
I have not received any cards, no.
Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. The planning report, Mrs. Fields. Hello.
January is the first month of the year, as you all know, and so the table in the monthly report is for January only. And you will notice that there were five customer service contacts at the counter. That means individuals came to discuss issues in land use within the city limits of Gladstone to the offices at 150 South Beaver Creek Road in Oregon City, and were assisted at the counter. There were 43 phone calls or emails. There were five building permits with land use review. There was one pre-application conference, and there were two administrative decisions. The administrative decisions included the gas station, the 76 station sign revisions. They submitted an application that requested a freestanding sign, and then, but the materials included some signs for the fuel canopies, and they requested that they amend the application to include the circles on the fuel canopies, and so we had to revise our decision. There was a two-lot partition on Columbia Avenue, and then the pre-application conference was the 18085 Webster Road, which was a proposal for new garages, storage, and recreational space.
I think you mentioned this at our last meeting, this is an existing multifamily apartment complex?
Correct.
Okay.
And so, it, what they are finding is that they need additional parking.
And then you have a list of building permits on the second page. Anything we should be aware of here? Routine stuff?
The West Arlington Street, they had a design review that was approved by you all, and they are still, to my knowledge, they are still working with Public Works to have the pre-construction conference.
This is the one from, I think it was November, the commission reviewed it?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a house and an empty lot.
Correct.
Right.
And so it was a new commercial building that would be utilizing parking on both lots to meet the parking requirements.
That's right. That's the one where we, we had to make a modification in our minutes last meeting because there was an unusual situation there. Okay.
Correct. Now, the future items, when this was, this monthly report was done at the end of January, I did not have complete applications on my desk, and so today, I want to let you know that March, there will be two land use matters coming before you. One is 810 East Arlington Street. It will be a design review application. They are doing site improvements, as well as renovation to the existing gas station. They will also be, they're proposing to add a new trash enclosure and a bottle storage area. And so you will see that application next month. And then 18,000 Webster Road has also submitted an application for a conditional use, and that is going to be combined with an authorization of similar use. And so that will be another application that you all will be considering.
Thank you for the heads up on that. The 810 Arlington Street, if you're not aware, that is the gas station adjacent to the Safeway store. It used to have an Arco sign, it changed its sign, and apparently doing some site improvement. Okay. You'll hear about those next month, and that will be a land use hearing that we'll have at that time.
Correct.
Okay, any questions for our planner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item three, the public hearing regarding text amendments to our code. We'll hear the staff recommendation.
Okay, so in January, I gave you all an overview of three items that have been passed by the Oregon Legislature, and two of them come into play tonight. One is Senate Bill 1051 from 2017, which required accessory dwelling units to be allowed on single-family residential lots. However, they allowed local jurisdictions to have regulations that were reasonable for those accessory dwelling units. House Bill 2001 was then passed in 2018, and in House Bill 2001, there was language that clarified that requiring that an accessory dwelling unit have one additional parking spot above what was required of the single-family residence, as well as owner occupancy, was not considered reasonable. And so tonight, with that framework before you, we will be discussing proposed changes. Perfect. Thank you. And the proposed changes before you are to Section 1710, which is the single-family residential district, and 1712, which is also a single-family residential district within the city limits of Gladstone. And in both of those districts, the proposed changes are to remove the additional parking space requirement for accessory dwelling units, and remove the owner occupancy unless that accessory dwelling unit is used as a vacation rental. Because within House Bill 2001, it was recognized that if the accessory dwelling unit was used as a vacation rental, then you could require an additional parking space and owner occupancy of either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Would you like us to hold our questions till you're done, or are you willing to take them as you proceed? Or does it matter?
I think we should wait.
Wait?
I have a ton.
Okay.
I do not have a preference.
Okay. Mr. Malachi thinks we should wait and now go along with this suggestion.
Okay. So, going through the proposed changes with other City of Gladstone staff, it was brought to my attention that there would need to be some system for reviewing the owner occupancy and the additional parking space if the ADU was used as a vacation rental. And so there was a question of whether the changes to 1710 and 1712 were sufficient as is, or if there also needed to be changes to 1778. So what you will see tonight are proposed changes in three sections of the Gladstone Code. 1710 and 1712 are in line with House Bill 2001, and 1778 is a way of having a permit attached to accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals. And so that is optional, and up for your review and consideration. These text amendments are meeting the House Bill 2001 requirements that found that requiring an additional parking space and owner occupancy was not a reasonable requirement for accessory dwelling units. They are also in line with the Gladstone Municipal Code that says text amendments must come before you, and you all must consider them and make a recommendation to the City Council after holding a public hearing. The Gladstone Comprehensive Plan has a goal for housing that is to meet the housing needs of all segments of the population through optimum utilization of housing resources for the construction, rehabilitation, and maintenance of the diversity of housing types at appropriate locations, price ranges, and rent levels, while preserving and enhancing the integrity and identity of existing residential neighborhoods. And then the proposed text amendments also trigger a review of the statewide planning goals to make sure that they're in line with those. And goal number one is citizen involvement. Goal number 10 is housing, and goal number 12 are transportation. There are other goals that are applicable as well, but some of them are only applicable to counties, and are not necessarily relevant to the discussion tonight, although they are all included in the staff report. One note on the transportation piece is House Bill 2001 exempts the changes of the code from going through a transportation analysis if it is to meet the middle housing needs as required by 2001, House Bill 2001. So the, the proposed amendments do not require a study of transportation. This is a very dry PowerPoint, and I apologize. I usually like to have pictures. So, in 1710, the accessory uses allowed in the single-family residential district include accessory dwelling units, which are subject to a variety of standards. And you'll notice that Item D, one of the standards in the code currently, is either that the primary dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit shall be owner occupied for as long as the other unit is being rented or otherwise occupied. Prior to issuance of a building permit establishing an accessory dwelling unit, a deed restriction requiring owner occupancy of one of the units shall be recorded in the Clackamas County Clerk's Office in the form prescribed by the city. Per House Bill 2001, that is no longer reasonable. And neither is the one off-street parking space that is provided in addition to the off-street parking space required by Chapter 17.48 of the Gladstone Municipal Code that establishes parking requirements for primary dwelling units. One piece of Senate Bill 1051 was that there are clear and objective standards for housing development, and so looking at Item G, there was a question in staff's mind of whether visually similar was objective, or if it needed to be removed to meet Senate Bill 1051 objective standards. That is why that is struck out. Again, Item I has proposed changes that aim to provide clear and objective criteria. Item L has two options on the screen in front of you. One is an accessory dwelling unit used as a vacation rental shall provide one off-street parking space in addition to the off-street parking space required by Gladstone Municipal Code for the primary dwelling unit, and a deed restriction requiring owner occupancy. Remember, these are accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals. The other option is accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals shall be subject to 1778, which is home occupations, and shall provide one off-street parking space and a deed restriction. So whichever way Planning Commission decides to go on Section 17.78 will determine which one we need to recommend to City Council. And so they both recommend one off-street parking space and a deed restriction for ADUs that are used as vacation rentals, but one makes accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals subject to a permitting process through the home occupation section of the code. We will be reviewing that section later, so keep that in mind. Now, the 1710 and 1712 have the same language for accessory dwelling units. So the changes that you saw in 17.10 for the R 7.2 zoning district, you will see for 17.12 as well. Again, Item D is removed. That is the owner occupancy requirement. Item E is also removed. And then Item L is added. For those accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals, they shall provide off-street parking and a deed restriction, and they may be subject to 17.78 if you guys determine that that is what you would like to recommend. So, home occupations, that is the Section 17.78. And they are in all zones, home occupations in the same lot shall be accessory to the principal residential use, and shall be permitted only in the following categories. You'll notice that Category 5 is added for your consideration, vacation rentals. And there is an Oregon Revised Statute 90.100 that defines vacation rentals. Within 17.78, there was a change that you saw in the staff report that moved some text from Item 5 up to this section. And that is for clarity perspective, and so that is for your consideration. If you think that it, that the, underneath the limitations on home occupations, if the two pieces in green need to stay within the limitation about abnormal automobile or pedestrian traffic, then that is up to you guys to decide. I found that, reading through it and working with staff, that Type 1 and Type 2 clearly have different traffic parameters that help to determine whether it's a Type 1 or a Type 2. And so to have the Type 1 home occupation may generate no more than six one-way trips per day, which shall be incidental to the operation of the home occupation. Up in that section that discusses a Type 1, at the forefront of the section of the Gladstone Municipal Code, may help people understand, okay, what is a Type 1? Oh, I'm going to have more than six one-way trips per day, I'm not going to be considered a Type 1 home occupation. Whereas a Type 2 home occupation may generate no more than 10 one-way client and commercial trips per day, except home occupations relating to instructional services, where no more than 20 one-way student trips may be permitted. These were already in the code, they were just down below, in a different section. So whether we move it up to here, or leave it where it is, that is something for you to consider. This is where it came from. And so moving it, you would not want it in two places at one, within the same section, unless you do. Duplication may not be bad. So this is the limitations on home occupations. As it currently reads, the items that are scratched out in green are all part of that limitation on the home occupation, which causes abnormal automobile or pedestrian traffic.
You can, and they don't need a traffic analysis to determine that?
No. You'll notice that there is one additional sentence that is struck out there, that is, as used in this chapter, instructional services are characterized by more, by one or more persons leading another person or group. This is moved to the section that talks about instructional services, which is Item 11, under the limitations on home occupations. So again, it did not go anywhere, but it was reorganized because this is the section that talks about instructional services, and so that definition and the student parking may be appropriate here, and that is for you to consider.
Excuse me, I know you don't want too many questions, a one-way trip. Most trips are two-way, so when you do the math, I'm just making sure that I'm seeing what I'm seeing, because we've got two different levels here, but most of those trips are round trips.
I think it was their way of saying a trip, and what is a trip? And so that is how it's defined.
Yeah. Well, but a one-way trip, like Trimate has a trip, and their definition is similar, so I'm not trying to get in the weeds here, I'm just trying to make sure that we know what these numbers really mean.
So those items did not pertain to accessory dwelling units, and that is the, the primary reason we're here tonight. But it's something to think about while we're opening this section up for changes. Are those changes helpful for clarity or not? However, the accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals, if they are to have a permitting procedure to give staff additional processes to review the additional parking space and owner occupancy, if deemed appropriate by you all. The home occupations, Section 17.78.020, the limitations on home occupations, there needed to be something in there for vacation rentals, including but not limited to the rental of accessory dwelling units. This is staff's recommendation on proposed change. Vacation rentals, including but not limited to the rental of accessory dwelling units, may be permitted as a Type 2 home occupation and are subject to the requirements of the underlying zoning district. That's where you get into one additional parking space and the owner occupancy, because the 1710 and 1712 sections would have that underlying zoning requirement. It also has the setbacks. So if people are concerned with where the accessory dwelling units will be placed, that comes into play in the underlying zoning district. And then, Section 16 below, you'll notice that no more than 25% of the floor area as defined by Gladstone Municipal Code, Section 17.06.195, may be used for the operation of a home occupation, including storage of equipment, materials, and completed products. There is an item here for you to consider of whether the entire accessory dwelling unit may be utilized for the home occupation. So the, the 25% of the primary dwelling may be used, or the entire accessory dwelling unit. Remember, the size required, or the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit is 400 square feet.
That's the maximum size?
That's the maximum size, 400 square feet.
Not a footprint.
400, 400 square feet of-
Living space.
Living space.
Not as big as this room.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, you know, if you look at this room, it's not this big.
It's not this big. And so that's the, the reasoning behind this proposal. So staff are recommending that you approve the proposed text changes to the Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapters 1710 and 1712, and consider the changes in 1778, and approve those changes that you determine to be appropriate. And make that a recommendation to City Council, who will also be holding a public hearing and making the final determination.
So, I'd like to get us started by asking Jackie to maybe talk to City Council. On page 3-4, the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan, Housing Goal Policy Number 2, unless I'm misreading it, it doesn't actually apply to the City of Gladstone, specifically because it's talking about centers that are served by mass transit transfer stations, which we have none within the city limits. Am I correct on that? Yeah. Uh, B. Housing Goal Policy 2. I understand this is not part of the ADU, but if we're going to use these as criteria, I think it's important to note that one of our primary policies does not apply to the city, and is part of our comprehensive plan. So I'd ask that City Council maybe review those policies and make, make sure that they make sense for us.
Would you not consider a bus stop a mass transit transfer station?
No, the one in Milwaukee would be a transit-
Yeah, in Oregon City.
Yeah, we do not have any in the city.
Okay, so the ones that are described as, as a, okay, the Oregon City Transit Center, that's your, your understanding?
The one in Milwaukee, Milwaukee. Yeah, we don't have any in the city. So that whole policy technically doesn't apply to the city. So I know that's not part of the ADU thing, but if we're going to use these as criteria-
They should be accurate.
They should be accurate for representing what the city is actually trying to do.
I'd agree with that.
Okay. May I ask a question, just a clarification? The use of the term permitting can be a little bit confusing, because sometimes permitting means the act of giving permission to do something. Sometimes permitting means actually filling out an application for a paper form, a permit. So in which sense are we talking about permitting vacation rentals? We are just- We are just talking about the requirements to give a person permission to do it, or are we talking about some kind of a form application process?
A system, right.
Probably administrative permit.
It would be-
I was gonna say, I believe that would be a business license. It would be applying for a business license and a home occupation permit.
Okay, so we have that in place. We recently added that to, as I remember from City Council dealing with this, the addition, Airbnbs didn't exist a few years back, but now they are so prevalent now that we had to make provision in our code for business licenses related to those.
Rentals.
Yeah, short-term rentals.
Yep, I just filled out the application today.
What, is there language in there that specifies, oh, we use the term short-term. We talked about the amount of space in a unit that can be occupied to constitute a short-term rental, but I'm wondering about the amount of time, the number of days over the course of a year. Obviously, if it's rented out every day of the year, it's a hotel. It's not a, it's not a short-term. Do you recall if we have language that, that sort of established the number of days out of a year or months or something that, that a unit could be used for that purpose?
We'd have to refer to the ORS statute.
Okay.
But I know that anything less than thirty days we can use as well. And part of the reason why we wanted to change language in this process is, one, because of the business license, two, because we want the surrounding neighbors to have a say, to have input, and the third is because we could collect transient lodging tax. So that's really the trigger for us-
Right.
-to put that language in there. But I would have to refer back to the ORS statute to see what the day amount is on that.
And I would not agree that a vacation rental, like if you go to Seaside, somebody's house, even if they rent it out year-round, is not a hotel. It's their house. It's one vacation rental. Usually hotels have multiple units within a single dwelling, right?
Okay, yeah. Equating it to a hotel is probably not the right thing, but I just wondered if we did have definitions that require, that described it in terms of the amount of time that it was used for that purpose. An accessory dwelling unit could be occupied for much of the year, and then a family could go on vacation in the summer and use it as a, as a vacation rental for someone else for income. And I think that unless it exceeded, unless the person's stay exceeded what's in the code, it would, it would qualify for that purpose.
The definition in, the definition in five point seven zero, under transient lodging tax for short-term rentals, does not have a number of days. What it says is, short-term rental means a house, duplex, multiplex, apartment, condominium, houseboat, trailer, or other residential dwelling unit where a person rents guest bedrooms or the entire residential dwelling unit for transient lodging occupancy. Generally, a short-term rental is zoned residential or has a building occupancy that only allows for residential use. Period.
Three days, no days specified.
Not in, not in the transient lodging tax section of the Gladstone Municipal Code. That's not the business license section.
Okay. I'd like to talk about page three dash five. That's L goal twelve. Let's talk a little bit about the expectation about traffic impact. So we are reducing required parking. That means we are increasing the number of on-street parking. So I don't think we can legitimately say that there will not be an impact on the transportation system. I am okay with us saying that the justification is the House Bill. I am not okay with us saying that there will not be an impact on the transportation system.
Thank you. I was actually going to raise the same issue. Thank you.
All right, so we have two commissioners-
Just, could I just real quickly, on that same vein, obviously, we're not required, but is there something we should do transportation-wise in our thinking here that we're not? Not here to add another layer to this, but it would be ludicrous to say that in a real world, the changes we're making aren't going to have noticeable, I'll use the word noticeable, transportation or traffic impacts.
Okay.
And it's all tied to our downtown plan, which I'm sure you've had time to read eight or ten times since you've been here.
Well, the changes we're considering extend far beyond the downtown. We're considering both of the R five and the R seven point two zoning areas, residential zoning areas. I would imagine that it's more likely, and this is just an observation, that it's more likely that ADUs would go in, in the R five zone than in the R seven point two, because that may be the area where some of the people could benefit most from development of the properties in that way.
Well, I agree, and those are the areas where the parking is the biggest problem. That's the conundrum. So let's not kid ourselves about what we're gonna do with parking.
It says, though, that it doesn't, it's not increasing the number of units or dwelling units allowed, so it's not any different than what's already on the books.
It's reducing the number of parking required, and that means that there is more parking on the street.
Yep.
Right? So it's less off-street parking, there is more on-street parking. Because it doesn't mean that people aren't driving. It just means we're not requiring them to have a parking spot.
You're still gonna have to find a place to park.
Yeah.
And let's step back for a minute and look at the big picture of this. Part of the reason we were considering this is because of the, the need for affordable housing across the state is what motivated the state to take action on this, out of the belief that accessory dwelling units would be one way to provide an additional supply of housing. The reason housing is expensive is because the demand for housing exceeds the supply. And to make an effort to increase the supply is thought to be able to address this. Now, whether the, whether the housing that is created will itself be of an affordable price, that's an issue that we don't really know because we haven't had a lot of experience in this. The city of Portland has a comparatively high number of accessory dwelling units. The other cities in the metro area have relatively few, zero in most of them, including Gladstone. Commissioner Smith? Oh, I wanted to ask Ms. Fields, on page three-three, these proposed amendments, the first one about removing the parking requirement, what's the genesis of that? Perhaps you explained it and I just missed it, but where, how did that start? How did we get that?
House Bill two thousand and one.
Are they the ones that say that we cannot require?
Yes.
We can't require it at all?
Not if, not unless it's used as a vacation rental.
See, that seems like almost an oxymoron to me, because a vacation rental, they're only there a few times where they'd require off-street parking, but if somebody actually lived in it all full-time and they had a vehicle, they'd require parking every day. I mean, if we can't fight it, we can't fight it, but it seems, it seems backwards to me. Also, we have representatives from the fire department and the police department here today, and I just wanted to see if you guys heard anything in any of this that you'd like to comment on. Okay?
Come on up.
I recognize Fire Marshal Funk.
Mike Funk, Fire Marshal for the city of Gladstone. When my chief asked me to review this, there's, there's things in the House Bill that, that we can't dispute, and I'm not here to dispute that. I don't know if we can have some things added, but my concern is locating the accessory dwelling unit. There's nothing in here or that I could see in our code, and perhaps I missed it, but there's nothing that I can see when somebody puts it in the back corner of their property of how that's identified and the address is not visible from the street. When there's an emergency, hey, if there's fire, a big plume of smoke, it's pretty easy to see, sometimes in the day, always at night, but if there's a medical emergency, then they're a lot harder to, and it's all about being able to locate and service to somebody that's asking for emergency, in my mind. Even more so if it's used as a vacation rental. They're probably not going to put a LAN line in it, because most people don't. I'm proposing something, again, if, if it allows us to do so, I'm proposing something inside of an ADU that is being used as a vacation rental. If we have the ability to do so, can we please put that informational, you are at address such and such, so emergency services can find you? So, so again, you guys are arguing or discussing different things. I'm coming from a different perspective, and maybe you're not even ready to talk about it, or if, if-
That's a great point.
Actually, this would seem to me it would apply to a police emergency, burglary in progress, something like that. You'd have to be able to identify the building quickly.
I just don't know what we can and can't.
You brought up an interesting point. Nothing I saw in here commented on whether ADUs, especially ones used for vacation, would actually be registered as a separate sub-address. There's nothing in here about that.
There's none.
And that might be something that would help with that.
Or is it within our realm? And if it is, I'm asking you to do so. My question is, I don't know if it's within our realm to talk about addressing. When we talk about, and I, I should read our own municipal code better, but I believe Gladstone Municipal Code requires, I know fire code requires to have a clear, clear address.
I think our municipal code requires that of a-
Residential house as well.
This is the first step of the process that will, you know, that will develop these with more clarity and more specificity regarding issues like that. I don't know whether you can call something, you know, if you, if address two fifty, call it two fifty and a half, or whatever. Some of these codes require the entrance not be facing the street as the same, as the primary dwelling unit has to face the side. You need to know how to get to it, where the entrance would be. So you're raising some very good safety concerns about this. They're not related to the specific codes that we're, that we're being asked to review tonight, but I think they will be, they will inform the larger discussion of this, because those are important issues from your perspective.
But I think what he's talking about could be included.
You want to try to draft language for it tonight to-
What I mean is, the concerns that they have should be included in any legislation that we're gonna be trying to draft.
Oh, yes, I, I agree. But I don't think we're going to necessarily send what we do tonight on for approval without combining it with other things that'll be coming later. Is that, do we want to do this piecemeal, or do you think it might be better to, to have a more comprehensive look at ADUs? Because we've had other recommendations from, from people we've engaged to do a study of these that go far beyond what we're looking at tonight regarding the size, regarding the, you know, their similarity to the primary unit. And we, I think we, we would be better to look at all of that together rather than break it up too much, but I want to keep in mind what you've, what you've brought up here, because it's important.
Thank you, sir. That was my total goal. I would, I would not come before this council and ask them to, to figure out all the language in this, but I felt that it was prudent and the appropriate time to bring to you fire concerns and, and like I said, some of the police, I'm certainly not going to speak for, for chief, but, you know, they may have some of the same concerns. I just wanted that out.
No, I think any kind of, any kind of first responders would need to know, and it might, might do, we might do well to consult with cities that have more experience of this to find out how they have handled it, whether it's a code thing, or, you know, if the city has given them separate addresses or required nine-one-one service or something else to, to make sure that those, those concerns are addressed.
We, we might also want to work with the GIS system to make sure ADUs are called out separately on the GIS as well.
Yeah.
I would-
I have some ideas. It just, I, again, I didn't think it was prudent to bring up all of those. I think I've brought up the key point enough for, it sounds like the planning commission is supportive of, of having some further discussion on that. Yes, ma'am?
I think it's important, moving forward. I know that when we've looked at commercial buildings for fire lanes and certain things like that, if there's an ADU bill, it has to be accessible to medical, fire, et cetera, and I think we need to think about that as a whole, as we're looking at setting up guidelines as to where they'd be placed and how they can be accessed. Because if you can't get to them with your fire engine to get the hose, that's not gonna work.
That's actually a fire, a hundred fifty-foot fire requirement.
Yeah.
And I agree, there's something needs to be done, but I can assure you that-
We need to think about a lot of big things here, yeah.
Sitting here, we could be spending a lot of time and a lot of money getting addresses and things for ADUs that are part of an existing home, a residence with a single address that are sold and, and, and I'm just thinking from the whole practicality of it, there's gotta be a way to identify them. And I know we're not going to debate it here, but when you start trying to create new addresses, you open up a big can of worms, just trust me.
Yeah, and they're, they're very difficult. I mean, one-
But still, it doesn't take, not to interrupt you, but it doesn't take away that we need to ID them, and obviously, your main point here, I'm totally supportive of.
I was trying to make a point to my chief, and one of the things, I, again, I don't know that this is legal, but that we do a lot of things with addresses. The, you know, number BA, BC is one way we do apartments. When we don't have the flexibility, sometimes we'll do, you know, five fifty-five Portland Avenue, five fifty-five and a half. Those things are a little bit different. Something that would tell emergency services something, again, if it was legal, is if we did, you know, so, I use my address, seventy-one, seventy-five Los Verdes Drive. And if we were, if I was to put that in my backyard for my mother-in-law, which would be a year-round use, seventy-one, seventy-five ADU, Los Verdes Drive. And that was just an idea, maybe not a good idea, but those are the kind of things that I was looking at, too. But again, it's for a different time.
Well, and you reference-
And I know your time is very important.
I, I think your reference is to a detached ADU. You mentioned something in the backyard, and remember, these regulations also involve the possibility of attached dwelling units that could be a basement, an attic, something over a garage, something in a converted garage, if you also apply, in most cities, the regulations require if you convert a garage to a dwelling unit, you have to supply the parking that that garage once provided somewhere else.
I think you bring up a really good point, and I would turn to Joy. There was one spot in here where it talked about it needed to be a minimum of ten feet from other structures. Is that saying the ADU is to be built ten feet from other structures? That's what I was interpreting it as. And I can't tell you exactly where it is in the code without looking it up.
If it was detached, I think it was-
Only, only for a detached.
Only, only detached.
Okay, okay.
Then the vast majority, especially in our smaller lots, would obviously just about have to be attached, but, but obviously, if it's attached, it's gonna be easier to, it's gonna be accessible from the main home, and it's, the address may not be such an issue. Whereas if they're around back in a separate structure, we better have a strobe light or something going for you, sir. I agree.
And they have to be accessible.
They have to be accessible.
All right.
All right, thank you very much here.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Appreciate it. Thanks, chief.
Ms. Fields, do you know what they, how they handle it in the city of Portland by any chance, or in other counties?
I do not know how the city of Portland handles it. The staff reviewed the Milwaukee Code, and it is very different than ours. And so the question of piecemeal or comprehensive, I think, needs an answer before we move forward. So House Bill two thousand and one, the, the inability for local jurisdictions to require parking and owner occupancy of ADUs came into effect January one, two thousand and twenty. So being piecemeal to, right now, would bring us into compliance with House Bill two thousand and one. And then we have a code audit for housing, the housing code audit, that will be taking place later this year and for the next couple of years, that can then look at it comprehensively. And so while these proposed amendments may appear to be piecemeal right now, there are going to be times where you are going to be looking at this comprehensively in the near future.
Okay.
House Bill two thousand and one will, directed the Department of DLCD, Department of Conservation and Land Division, to have a model code by December of this year. So December of this year, there will be a model code. There is also the Gladstone Grant that is looking at the housing needs analysis for Gladstone. And so you're going to be having a lot of information, including information from other directors and other staff and citizens, that will come into play when you're looking at it comprehensively.
All right, that's helpful. So you're recommending that tonight, we deal with the ones that, that we need to already be in compliance- that we need to already be in compliance with because the state law made them effective January 1, which we can look at. Other aspects of this, we can look at in the future. We mentioned the size, the 400 square feet. Gladstone is the only community in the entire metro area that has that small of a minimum AD, or maximum ADU requirement. The vast majority are 800 feet or more. Some of them make reference to a ratio of the size of the ADU to the size of the primary dwelling unit. Some people think those kinds of ratios tend to discriminate against the smaller homeowner, who may be the person who financially, economically, needs the ADU most, but can't build it to comply with the rules because it can only be, you know, 60% or 75% of their primary home size. So those are some issues we might want to look at in the future.
Generally, a smaller home is not on a immense lot either. Everything seems to be scaled to me.
But some are. I always point to the, you know, we managed to get a triplex on a lot, 7,900-square-foot lot that only had a 1,000-square-foot home on it. So in this part of the town, there are some lots that could still have a pretty substantial-sized building on it. But it's hard to generalize. I don't know all the individual lot sizes well enough-
Nor do I.
-to make a general statement about that.
Ms. Fields, how did the 400 square feet, how did that come into being?
That was before my time. I'm not sure.
We adopted these regulations into our code back around 2000. And I have not, I don't think the city council minutes reflect a great deal of discussion about them. They may have been discussed in more detail in the Planning Commission at that time when they determined what size. But there was a code audit for, related specifically to accessory dwelling units done throughout the county that compared and had a chart showing the various sizes. I tried to duplicate it and print it out to get to you, but all I could copy was a small picture that wouldn't have been readable. But as I say, 800 or more is the vast majority. That's the-
I would ask if 400 square feet isn't, on its face, an economic impediment to doing it.
Well, yeah, I wonder if that's one of those things that makes it unreasonable.
So if you're going to use it as a rental-
Yes.
Unless it's already part of the-
So I want to challenge this in the other way.
Okay.
Page 314, and it's on 4A. So we specifically say here that manufactured buildings must not be less than 1,000 square feet. That means they could not be ADUs. That means they could not be tiny homes. That means that we couldn't have a cottage of tiny homes. I think that this thousand-square-foot minimum is prohibitive in the same way.
Well, there's a point where we're starting to build a whole new house, and we're almost making a duplex. So it kind of, you know, we have to go back to, what is the purpose of an ADU?
Right.
An accessory dwelling unit. I was there in 96 when the City of Portland went crazy over ADUs. And they were the worst idea in the history of planning. We cannot have them. I can bring you, and I'm looking forward to bringing you, the video from 1996 when the worst thing that could possibly happen to Portland was ADUs. So why are ADUs popular now? Because of the economy, because of a constrained environment, because we don't have a lot of land. Metro's controlling the growth boundary very tight. Density's coming. So the cost of living is going up. So great, we're going to build an ADU to complement our home. We're going to build an ADU for housing. I don't know what the correct size is, but when we go from 400 to 800 to 1,000 in 30 seconds, I'm not sure that we're having a good conversation.
And what I'm saying is-
Just a sec, just a sec. I'm almost done. The other thing is, this gets really complex because an ADU ultimately can become a rental unit. What stops the transition back and forth? How do we regulate that? And how do we, in other words, I said a rental unit, I meant a vacation rental. There's a big difference between a need for housing and a desire to have vacation rentals. We're dealing with a housing crisis, not a vacation rental crisis.
So what I was saying is, here it says a minimum of 1,000 in the code today, which would prevent manufactured ADUs. Right? Because our ADUs are a max of 400.
Right.
So this code that we have here prevents ADUs.
Well, I think it's just the dimensional standards for particular lots.
Right. But if it's 1,000, it can't be an ADU.
Well, yeah, an ADU can only be 400 square feet, right? But I think what you're looking at is the dimensional standards for a lot. So if you wanted-
This isn't the lot. The lot is on the earlier page. It is on 312-1B, and that's 3,600 square feet, which is possibly also prohibitive.
I meant the dimensional standards for a specific building type.
Right.
So they're saying if you want to put a manufactured home on an R7 lot, it has to be an enclosed space, not less than 1,000 square feet. I think that's- All right, let me ask, just for clarification. When you read the term manufactured dwellings in here, what I see in my head is what we used to call, what were they?
Mobile homes?
Trail, mobile homes, trailer homes. When you say manufactured dwelling, are you including in your mind the kind of prefabricated, drop it in the backyard, ADUs that we see advertised on Amazon and other places? Can we get some clarification then from our planner on what the distinction is?
Yeah, because I'm thinking you can order a tiny home on Amazon for $4,000 and have it delivered.
Yes.
Why could that not be an ADU?
Well-
The definition of manufactured dwelling in section 17.06.328 is the definition of manufactured dwelling. And it means a single-family dwelling with a Department of Housing and Urban Development label certifying that the structure was constructed on or after June 15, 1976 and met the requirements of the Federal Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards and Regulations in effect at the time of construction, consistent with the 1989 Oregon laws. This is a trailer that has a HUD sticker. Now, if the tiny home on Amazon has a HUD sticker certifying that it met the requirements and was structured, constructed after June of 1976, maybe.
Yeah.
I have not, working with building departments, they have not signified that tiny homes had that label from HUD.
Because the thing I'm concerned about is, you know, we're here to talk about ADUs, but we're looking at this language that's talking about the restrictions. And there's not a lot of difference between the tiny homes and the ADUs, technically. Right? In terms of size, in terms of what they're used for, there's not much difference. And so I just question any of the language here that seems to make it prohibitive.
Can there be a range of sizes that would be adaptable depending on the size of the lot that you are working with? Say from 400 to 700, just as an example, from four, minimum of 400, maximum 750?
The various communities, the code audit that was done for the entire metro area included 24 cities and three counties. And they listed all the various requirements. Some were just a flat number, 800 square foot minimum, for example. Some may have had a maximum. Some related a percentage of that size, a ratio of the size to the size of the dwelling. That would give you that range. So that if you had a 1,600-square-foot house, and the maximum size could only be 50% of the size of the house, then you could have no bigger than 800 square feet. But if the house itself was larger and you had a percentage requirement, it could be larger. So you'd get a range. The idea was that they sort of be in proportion. You wouldn't want, a lot of people would not want an accessory dwelling unit to tower over the existing home.
Right.
Again, and these, most of these refer to detached. I don't know that the regulations say how much. No, I think they probably do. We probably have regulations that also say what percentage of the footprint of your home can be an accessory dwelling unit. A lot of, sometimes it's as small as 40% in some codes I remember reading. And they said, "That makes it difficult for a two-story home to have one of the stories be the accessory dwelling because you'd have to have a portion of that floor of the home be part of the main unit and couldn't be part of the ADU." Whereas if you said 50%, then you could have one floor that was ADU and one floor that was primary. And so, you know, the adult children could live downstairs and the family, the rest of the family, the parents could live upstairs. And you'd have a two-family ADU that would meet the code, so.
It just seems that purely 400 square feet, that doesn't seem reasonable to me.
Well, that falls in, and that was the same as the recommendations that we got from Segal Planning Services, who we engaged last year to do our code audit for needed housing. They had a whole page, a chart, and I'll try to get it in our minutes next time. But they looked at the code considerations that would support ADU development. And one of them was on the floor area maximum. Our existing standards shall not exceed 400. Their recommendation, allow ADU up to 75% of the primary residence or somewhere between 800, 1,000 square feet, whichever is less.
You mean, 75% of a 3,000-square-foot home, that's a duplex. That's not an ADU.
Well, because the maximum size you could have.
There'd be a maximum of the detached ADU, but you would also have a square foot maximum, 800 or 1,000 square feet, and whichever is less would be the size. So a 3,000-square-foot home, 7500, 75, I don't want to do the math, that's-
But your lot size is going to have, you know, based on setbacks and things, is going to have a lot to do with whatever you can put in there, regardless of the size of the primary building on the lot.
All right. We're seeing that there are a lot of issues related to some of the dimensional things that we could look at in the future as we take what we've talked about, the more comprehensive view of this. But let's tonight, let's focus right now on the two recommendations that would bring him, bring us into compliance with the H-
I don't want to just focus on the two things because I have other things in here I'd like us to make sure to address. For example, 311 to the deed restrictions. So first of all, the way it's worded right now, it says that either the primary or the accessory shall be owner-occupied while the accessory dwelling is a vacation rental. If the owner is occupying the accessory, it's not a vacation rental.
This brings in chapter 17.78. If the ADU is being used per the deed restriction by the owner, then only 25% of the primary dwelling could be used as the ADU as the proposed changes are now.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, where is this saying that the owner has to physically be living?
The deed restriction does not determine where the owner has to live.
But it says owner occupied, right?
Yep. So the owner has to live on the site. But they can choose to either live in the primary dwelling or in the accessory dwelling. And then there's a question of if they're in the accessory dwelling, then how are they only going to be renting out 25% of the primary dwelling for a vacation rental?
So the second half of this-
Or do we change the text in 17.78?
So the second half of this, I would like to question whether it makes sense for us to add this deed restriction at all. And the reason for that is, what is the realistic use case? So let's say you have a house and you're trying to downsize. So you end up living in your ADU while you rent out your house, right? You decide to move, maybe to go live in senior living facility, right? You have to now evict them. I don't think that's a good plan, right? The only reason this deed restriction, I mean, this deed restriction is going to require you live on the property.
No, only if I were using it as a vacation rental would I be required to have the owner occupied. I wouldn't have to live there if I just used it as a rental. If I rented the entire house, I could own a house with an ADU and not live in either of them and rent them both, as long as it was a full-term rental rather than a short-term vacation.
You couldn't rent them both because you have to be owner occupied.
No, you don't. Under the new law, you can't. You can't make that requirement.
Because of the housing bill.
Only, the only time I would have to be owner occupied, one of them would have to be occupied by an owner, would be if it was a short-term vacation rental.
If it's a vacation rental.
Because now it's, we're back to, it's more of a, I'll call it, a commercial use versus a residential.
Right. So if you're renting them both out, then this doesn't apply. It's only if you're renting, if you're doing short-
Long-term rental or lease, or even if you were, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're, if you're selling your home and there's a renter there, again, if there's full-term, I mean, you know, long-term occupancy, long-term rentals, then we don't have a problem and we're not inhibiting anyone, so to speak.
For the ADU specifically.
Right. But again, we go back to, if it's, we're getting in the weeds here, but we really need to, folks. Because I'm going to go buy a lot. I'm going to buy a little tiny house, or buy, find the right lot with a tiny house on it. I'm going to build me a big house in the back. I'm going to move into it, and I'm going to rent out the front, or vice versa. Now, I'm not saying that's good, bad, or wrong, but there's a lot of scenarios here. And my biggest concern, I don't have any question about what our goal is, but I do have a concern about, we're trying to address a commercial use and vacation rentals, and we're also trying to address a housing crisis, and we're trying to address infill and people, you know, having residents. And again, I say, it gets confusing, and you just saw that. And earlier I heard that the AD, we have, correct me again if I'm wrong, there's a lot going on here. But if I own the home and it's a business use and it has an ADU, I currently cannot use that for storage, or I'll be able to in the future?
25%.
For business use?
The home occupation?
Right. That makes, see what I'm saying? In other words-
You're not allowed to use 25% for storage.
Okay, but I understand that, but that wasn't my question. My question was allowing, which I don't believe we do allow, this 400 or 700 or 800-foot ADU to be used for storage in the future. Or, you know, and I'm not one that likes to restrict the heck out of everything, but if we're building ADUs, we're not building offices. Right?
Right. There's supposed to be homes for people that need them.
We're not building a little mini warehouse that we say is an ADU.
Well, I think, I think the distinction is-
You sure I'm going with that?
An ADU could be built, someone could build one with the idea that they could open their accounting business and use it as an office and use the entire thing. But even the, but the code recommendations that staff is suggesting would only allow the use of the entire ADU for a business if that business is vacation rental. Otherwise, it would be subject to the same code that we have now, where only a portion of it. So if you want to have an accounting business, a tax preparation business out of your home, that should only take up a specified percentage of your home space to do that.
Right.
So that people can't get a commercial use out of a residential.
Well, and it's more of the use of the ADU. I, we're building an ADU, we built an ADU. I sold it to the gentleman down here. He moves in, he doesn't know the code, he doesn't know the rules. And again, I'm not, we're getting into uncharted territory here.
Yes.
But the point of it is, how are we really going to regulate this? How are we going to track it? Questions for staff. I don't expect answers right this minute. And going back, I keep, maybe I seem stuck, folks, but I know what SB 2001 was all about. I was there. And it really wasn't about vacation rentals. And at the same time, I'm not here to say, "Don't build vacation rentals." I'm not anti-Airbnb or anything else. I'm saying, we're dealing with housing needs. And while commercial vacation rentals are a form of housing that we should embrace, if we spend too much time accommodating them or creating a situation where our code is going to be violated or we've overlooked things, and the next thing you know, we've got people using them for everything but ADUs. A dwelling unit, accessory dwelling. What's a dwelling?
Where someone lives.
That's where someone lives. So I'm just concerned about, and I've been to this movie before and other areas where, oh, well, it's, I'll run my business out of here. Well, that's fine, then your business grows. We have this going on in our neighborhood.
Commissioner Williams, do we need to adopt these new 2001? That is our main objective, for example.
You need to make a recommendation to city council.
Okay, we need to make a recommendation to city council. Sitting back, just taking, taking on what is being said, there is so much that is not been done by the legislature that we don't even really have, we're, you know, the small little fish in the big pond. I think what we need to do is to move forward and adopt what we need to adopt, and then go through and start realizing what we can do to make changes as we progress, because we're going to get nowhere.
Well, I agree with you. I suggested that earlier. Malachi, you indicated you had a couple of the questions, and you weren't willing to look at the two things that we need to adopt to comply. Are you willing to let us look at that first and then have a discussion?
We can look at them first, but we can't stop before we go through the other stuff that needs to be done.
All right, Mr. Smith?
I believe all of this is very necessary and good, but this is something we should do, and we're with city council on our work session, because we need to sit down at the table and say, hey, which direction are we going to go forward with this? What's our vision for our city?
When you say this, are you talking about the ones to come?
I'm talking about everything we've discussed, which is very valid and important. We need to bring that up again and share what we have talked about so far tonight in that work session, see if they've thought, because our, you know, all of our minds are thinking about all these intricacies, and they need to be on the same page with us.
So are you unprepared to act on the recommendations that would bring in compliance with?
I'm totally prepared to act on the recommendation. I'm just saying, all this is good, and we should bring it to our work session with city council.
I agree with that part, yes.
Could we, could we get some clarification on some of the recommendations? In other words, I understand we need to move forward. I also understand that if we don't get it done this month, that's too bad. We're going to, we'll be here next month, and, you know, no one wants that, but we're not going to do a rush job, right?
Right, so 17.10 and 17.12 are the ones that we need to address. 17.78, that discusses home occupations in relation to accessory dwelling units, that could be part of the code audit. That could be something that you guys hash out at length, or for a specified time, each planning commission meeting. But I, I see it.
Administrator Bets, you, you have some feelings on this matter?
Administrator Bets here, well, I, I think that you guys are, are doing both. You're going deep and you're ready to just comply with the state. And I, and I agree, I think you should not deal with 17.78 tonight, because there's a lot of unanswered questions, and Senate Bill 100 is in relation to just addressing affordable housing. So I think it's important for the city to come in compliance. We are already a month and a half.
Not compliant.
Not compliant.
Right.
And then, again, as Joy indicated, that is what we have the grant for, is to get into the housing needs analysis and finish the housing code audit. And all of the points, even like Commissioner Malachi has, that he wants to bring up, that's, that's the appropriate place to do that.
All right.
But I, I agree, I think we should remove 17.78 for tonight's purposes.
Okay, so let's take a look, turn to page, I think 310 is the first place, page 310 in your agenda, Sections D and E are the first places where we, these are the changes that specifically bring us into compliance with, with what's required by the state.
Correct.
So we would be removing the owner occupation requirements and removing the off-street parking requirements, the additional off-street parking requirements associated with ADUs from our current code.
Is there a reason why F is required, the only one entrance?
That is how the code is now.
I understand that's why it's there, but if we're going to be editing the code, we should at least question whether it's valid for what we're changing.
Well, I, I only want to.
Because in the past, in the past, we often go, we look at code, and we're told to only look at the small piece that we're editing, and then everything else sits for 10 years. We shouldn't just skip by it, because it's like we're already.
Well, it's not a 10-year skip, as Administrator Bets and, and Planner Fields just explained, we have a code audit that we're paying for, that will look in more detail at these other things. Tonight, our goal is to get through the ones that would bring us into compliance with these specific sections.
Good question. Is, there's no way to avoid, because it's state, the off-street parking rule, is there?
What do we, what do we need to, okay, then. The, I mean, if, if the law's been cast, we can say, fine, let's do it, but we also can't say, fine, we're not going to do it.
You could, you could deny the recommendation, but if somebody was to apply and it would be appealed to Luba, we would lose, and that's just.
It's state mandated.
It's state mandated, yes, that's correct.
How, how do you want us to approve these? Do you want us to make a motion?
I will accept the motion to amend Section 1710-5 with the removal of Paragraphs D and E as shown in the, in the staff report. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Natalie Smith, second by Commissioner Williams, to make the change associated with, in the R72, removal of D and E. Any discussion of that specific recommendation?
Any discussion?
Only on D and E are, are we, we're not.
Yeah, we're only looking at D and E in the 7.2 zone, we'll have a similar one in the, in the R5 zone.
Yeah.
Well, but I want to deal with those a little separately, and I'll.
Right, I'm just clarifying to everybody that we're only doing.
That's right, just the D and E part. And this, this, we would recommend to the city council that they adopt these changes, that, that would be the motion, all right? Any further discussion?
I feel like what we're being asked to do is just rubber stamp specific changes rather than actually dealing with the issues as a whole, and I'm not okay with that.
Well, in a sense, that's true. We are making specific changes to bring us into compliance with things that the state has dictated that we have to have in our code.
I, I understand, and I'm okay with us doing specific changes. I am not okay with us just glossing over everything else.
Nor am I. I have a lot of things that I'd like to look at with much greater depth than we, than we have time to do tonight.
But I think that's on, I think that's down the road a piece. I think tonight we need to make a decision on these two specifically.
I understand, but in the last three years.
Almost done. Then in business from the council, when we're done, we can go on and on about these other changes that we need to address in the future.
And I think we need to address this also in our work session with city council.
Agree with that.
Because I think we'll get support, but we'll also determine some certain criteria to move forward.
And I understand what you're saying, but in the last three years, every time we've said that, it's never happened.
Right.
So we have to go with forward with this, assuming that if we say that, it will not happen, because it has not happened historically.
Boy, I don't think this, that these two issues are the end of the ADU discussion in Gladstone.
No, definitely not.
I think there's a long way to go, and all these things can be brought up, appropriate's probably not the right term, but at a, at a more workable time than tonight.
I could even see a committee of citizens that will be developed in order to address and review some things and to help us with determining set criteria.
Well, I see, I see Commissioner Malachi's concern, because he's probably true that maybe things have been sort of skirted in the past, but I don't think the makeup of this particular body is in the skirting business.
This is, this is a huge.
Huge deal.
This is a huge deal.
Yeah.
I do not like what's going on in the city of Portland, so it's not, I mean, I'm just speaking my, where I come from, and they're allowing it to go. I think this is an issue that really needs to be looked at. I don't believe that it's totally in all of us. I think it, it's much larger than us. I think the council needs to be brought in. I like your idea of bringing in a group of people and to have a, a true discuss, you will probably never get, I mean, you'll get somewhere, but to where we can make decisions. And when we do take it to city council, they know what we're, basically, we're at, and we're all in somewhat of agreement. Because this is, this, you go and take our off-street parking, I mean, we don't have enough of it is already. You go and start building out Gladstone, we don't have enough of it. I mean, it's, it's, it's huge, and it's, it really needs to be addressed and looked at.
That's, that's helpful input, and, and I think I'm sensing a commitment among all of you to want to look at this in far greater depth, and I think the process we have in place to do that will be followed. Well, now, we have not, we have not asked for additional public comments so far. I see one other individual in the audience, in, in the, in the room tonight. Did you come to address this specific issue? Would you like to share anything with us? Do you have any questions or comments? Okay, very good. Thank you for coming and, and being here. Some nights, we don't have any members of the general public with us, so we appreciate your attending.
And just so I'm clear, we got a, we got a motion?
Yes.
And it's for D and E?
Correct. Removal of D and E, and it, that would necessitate a renumbering of the, of the ballots, of course, but we're recommending essentially that we do that.
Okay.
So all, all those who would approve the motion to amend Section 7.10 by removal of Paragraphs D and E from Section 5, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion carries. We have, now there's a similar section in 1712, and that appears on page 3-19. This is for the R7.2 zone. No, this is for the R5, the other one for, for the R7.2.
Correct.
Does someone have a similar motion to make here?
Because it's exactly the same verbiage.
Yes.
I make a motion.
All right, Commissioner Williams makes that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Quick discussion.
Pick your Smith, whichever one you want.
Yeah, pick him.
And your discussion, go ahead.
His discussion, the, you know, and it was in the earlier vote we had, I'm curious about visually similar, similar aspect, are we?
We didn't talk about those. Those are something that I had a concern about, because a lot of the things that I've read about those things, that, that parts of the codes that are impediments to the development of ADUs include these kinds of requirements. We included them here, as I understand it, because to comply with the, it was the 1051 that had the language regarding clear and objective standards.
Correct.
But what I don't really understand is, you know, well, I guess we're describing both windows and exterior finish, but I've seen, I've seen codes developed a little more, with a little more detail than this. If you have six-inch cedar siding on your main residence, and you want to put four-inch hardy plank siding on a smaller ADU, is that similar enough? Is it the same? Does it have to be identical? If you have a peaked roof on one, can you have an angled roof only on the other? I, I don't want to restrict those standards myself, so I'm happy not to deal with these recommendations tonight, because unlike some others, I think, on the commission, I think this, that the ADUs offer an opportunity to increase the housing supply and to make people who, particularly older people who have owned their homes for a long time, to make their property worth more to them and perhaps generate some income. So I don't want to provide impediments to that. I don't have the same feelings about, you know, how it's been done in other areas. And, and in fact, I'd like, I found a really good resource published by the AARP. This is a national publication, and they have some good examples and make some similar code change recommendations. This is not strictly a Portland issue or a metro issue.
Nationwide.
This is a nationwide thing, and things that are being done in Vancouver, British Columbia, even outside our nation, they kind of led the way in, in, in creating some of the ADU codes and developments, and making them apply across the board and not just to certain parts of the city. So this is a discussion that has to continue, but for now, let's just look at, again, page 319, Sections D and E. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So we have made those changes. That brings us into compliance for now. We have a long way to go.
Can we, can we back up here?
Sure.
I think we've overlooked, back in 7.2. I mentioned earlier, after that.
Commissioner Paul, what page are you on?
310, 3-10. I only bring it up because we heard that people are opposed to this, or opposed to ADUs, and we heard all kinds of things here, but I ask a question. It's, we did not address number G. It says, "Exterior finish materials, including siding, trim, and roofing of an accessory dwelling unit shall be the same or visually similar, similar as those of the primary dwelling unit with respect to type, size, placement, and color." And we're eliminating visually similar, which, the only reason I ask that or bring that up is that, does it necessarily have to be the same if we're adding on to an old home and we're building something? Because it says, "Shall be the same," when you take out the word visually similar, and I see that as an impediment rather than a, and we, we just kind of glossed over that, so.
No, you and I agree exactly. I just made the same statement.
David, I want to make sure that, that, that this.
We are, we are not recommending approval of this part right now.
Right.
So to clarify for Joy, so you took this out because it was to make it more concrete language, and what he's saying is that it's making it more restrictive.
Correct.
Yeah, and we really didn't discuss that, and it, it's a secondary, it seems secondary to D and, well, to the main, in other words, it's not really germane or critical to meeting compliance tonight, so I brought that up as something we seemed to slide over, and I'm not so sure. Back to Malachi's point, that's where we're, we don't want to get too deep in the weeds, and then there's a feeling like, let's get this over with, and I think what we need to do is somewhere in between, so.
No, I think when we get to the more comprehensive look, we will be sure that we have clear and objective.
But did we not, did we okay this or not?
No, we did not. We only did D and E in both sections, we did not.
Perfect, I just want to make sure.
Now, the other change, now, the, the language regarding the ADUs used as vacation rentals, this is the exception that the state law allows.
Correct.
And so I believe we should take action on that part as well. We could deal with both of them at the same time, I don't think it's necessary to break them up into districts. Do we have further discussion on this issue? Well, some people have said, oh, oh, I wanted to bring back the thing you had about trip generation. It's different, you know, if you're, if you're in an ADU and you've come to visit Gladstone, and you want to see all the sights and sounds of Gladstone, you might drive your car to and from the house six times a day as a vacation rental occupant. Your recommendation was treating it more like the 10 trip a day, or you didn't really have a, you, you said we had an option.
As Administrator Bets mentioned, she recommended we not move forward with 17.78.
Okay.
And so if you guys are going to revisit 17.78 at a future date, the top letter L would be followed by 1 and 2. The bottom letter L on the screen in front of, over there, would be eliminated. And that is what is shown on 3-11 of your staff report.
Right.
So the trip generation, that is a good discussion point for when 17.78 is looked at again.
Okay, so we won't deal with, look at that part of it. All right. Would someone like to move that we adopt the language that's on page 311?
We can't, because.
The part of this.
L1 says 1748 as well.
Yep. No, it's 17.48. That is the parking requirement for all single-family residential.
The other one is 17.78.
Oh, 17.48, gotcha.
Correct, correct. Two different sections.
So as far as the discussion on this, I think number two is confusing, and I'm not sure that it's necessary.
You don't. Commissioner Malachi, what are you referring, page in?
311, the, the red that we're looking at.
The number two?
Number two.
I think number two is confusing.
A deed restriction requiring owner occupation.
And I think that it may not be necessary.
You don't.
So you would prefer no owner occupancy requirement at all, even for a vacation rental?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, say, you were living in the ADU and you had rented out the main house, I don't think there should be any change required. house, I don't think there should be any change required if you moved out and rented it out.
Okay. We have people who own homes in Gladstone who do not reside in Gladstone and are able to rent those homes to people.
Long-term, right, or are you thinking...
Well, long-term for sure, but I think, Administrator Betts, you might know more than I, or Tammy, you take the, you get the applications for the, for the business licenses. If someone owns a home in Gladstone in which they do not reside, can they offer that home on Airbnb if they apply for a Gladstone business license?
They can, they are required to have a business license for that.
All right. So if we don't require it for a full-size home, your feeling is maybe we don't need to require it for a, an ADU either?
And I specifically am thinking if, if people move out of an ADU, their requirements around it shouldn't change. Like, we shouldn't impose restrictions because they moved out. That's the thing I think, David.
Okay.
But how do we codify or, you know, put meat into it, so to speak, without trampling, or is there a better way, or, maybe not a better way, but, because to just say, well, we don't like this idea, or maybe a deed restriction's too much, leaves a can of worms sitting here.
What is the goal?
Well, the goal is to, is to have the process and the ability to do this not abused, and if we don't have a way to avoid abuse, we'll have a problem. That's just how things work.
I mean, it sounds like you have to have a business permit to do it, right? So the city has the ability to say yea or nay.
But what action or what, what legal process takes place when you're in violation?
You lose your license and therefore you're not legally allowed to operate that business again. That's one of the main reasons we have business licenses for any kind of business in the city. It's, it's not that we need the income so much, we need to be able to control the kind of business that exists and make sure that they uphold the standards of the community. So if you're concerned about abuse, the business license system is certainly one level of that. The owner occupancy requirement doesn't address that specifically. Are you, do you share Commissioner Malakai's concern about the need or the lack of need for owner occupancy?
Well, he raises a good question, but I, I think if we look at the spirit of what we're trying to do here, an accessory dwelling unit is being added to your home. And if you're going to use that commercially, without specific language and without a very clear, recordable, or, or defensible way of, of making that stick, what will happen is someone will lose their license, and then they'll, what are they going to do? Well, they'll reapply and get back in compliance, or they'll change the ownership, they'll do, so, again, I'm saying, people are inclined to skirt things, and we just need to be aware of that, and, and at the same time, I'm not saying necessarily, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, that the deed restriction is the best answer, but it's up here for a reason, and may, possibly we could get some clarification as to where that came from, because that wasn't just tossed in there.
It is up there because it's currently in the code.
Right.
That either the primary dwelling or the ADU is...
Owner occupied.
Owner occupied.
But the housing bill eliminated that.
And so, it is in there for vacation rentals because it is allowed by House Bill 2001 if it's used as a vacation rental. And so there's a question of whether you all would like to recommend to the city council that the property owner is on-site if an accessory dwelling unit is used as a vacation rental, or if the primary dwelling unit is used as a vacation rental, that the property owner is on-site. When there are two structures on a lot, it could be different than having one structure on a lot. And so, having ADUs is currently one way of having more than one dwelling unit on a lot in Gladstone, because duplexes are not allowed outright. And so, right now, if you want to rent it out as a vacation rental, and it's an ADU, you have to have a deed restriction saying you will either be living in the ADU or the primary dwelling unit, because that is required right now for any ADU. And so, it's a question of, do we need it?
So you're preventing people from creating a, essentially a duplex, skirting the rule?
Correct.
I, I think that likelihood of it working, to be honest, is about as good as Portland did in keeping Uber from coming in. That's really what it comes down to.
A deed restriction on a piece of property is a far cry from some kind of an ordinance or floating target. A deed restriction is something that's not ignored.
No, it's legally binding.
Yeah.
Well, until they get overturned because they're not legitimate anymore. Like, my deed has restrictions on it that the court has been banned because they're no longer valid.
But I think back to our most, our most recent, one of our recent decisions was in regard to the home with the lot next to it where there's shared parking. Well, there's a deed restriction there to address the parking, and that, that was a subject of discussion because their agreement wasn't really in line with what the, what the end result was, but the point of it all is that that is very clear, that's easy to find, that's not a document that we can't locate, which seems to be a problem in this county.
It's recorded at Clackamas County.
And so, and I'm not here to blame the county or anyone else, but I can't, I can't begin to tell you how many times contracts, agreements, wording, things of this nature create a real conundrum, a big conundrum, because they're not, they're, the information is not recorded, the information is not available, and regardless of whether or not someone loses their license, we need to do things so we don't get to that point.
Well, okay, so Commissioner Poole, what I hear you saying is that because of your concern about possible abuse, you think that a deed restriction is perhaps a better way of ensuring enforcement with the...
I, I, I'm questioning, I, I'm not saying it's a better way, and I'm not saying there isn't a better way, I'm saying to eliminate it with, and assume that because we've got licensing, that that's going to take care of it, well, we've got a...
I think this needs to stay in.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm, I'm hearing perhaps a consensus that, that, well, I'm not going to try to read the consensus, let's take a vote. The vote, right, the, the, the motion right now is to include the deed restriction requirement and the change in the, and the additional off-street parking requirements for ADUs used as a vacation rental. Are we clear then, that if you vote yes on this, you want to keep the deed restriction requiring owner occupancy of one or more of the units?
We do need a motion on that. We don't have an official motion.
I thought that, um...
I thought we did.
I thought that Commissioner Williams made the motion, and Commissioner Pass Smith...
Both Smiths.
Yes, either, take your choice on the Smiths.
That, that would be the last one. Last motion.
Oh, that was for the last one, okay, good.
That was for 712.
All right, all right, all right. So I will entertain a motion to add the language of Paragraph L on Page 311.
I make a motion to add the language in Paragraph, Paragraph L.
All right. Is there...
I'll second that.
Commissioner Poole seconds it. So we've had good discussion of this already. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Record one opposed. The motion passes. So these recommendations will be passed along. Let's see, was that just in one section? I assume, uh, may I assume that your, your motion referenced both the 7.2 and the 5.0 zoning areas?
I meant to say that.
Yes, you meant to say that, yes, that's good.
I, I would like to revisit what, what, that, that we just passed. I'm, I think that it needs more, I mean, I'm new to this, so I'm, but I'm just saying, I think it needs more, I think this is heavy discussion.
Yes.
This is, this is creating the growth that's going to be happening in Gladstone for the next 30 years, and as Malakai you said, we need to really get into this, and I agree with it, and I think we need to take one section at a time, or we get the group and go get, get it, but it, it is very important that we go through this, because I...
We need to do an audit.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, we have had ADUs permitted in our code for 20 years now, and there are exactly zero legal ADUs. There may be some, do you know what an everything but is? Have you heard that term?
Oh, yeah. You've got to hear those.
There, you know, what makes it a residence is if you have basically a, an oven, range, stove. And so, some counties, some jurisdiction notices, there were a lot of people asking to build a structure because they said, oh, I'm really getting into ceramics, and so I, what I'd like is to be able to plug in a 220-volt kiln to do my ceramics, so I need 220-volt electricity, which coincidentally is the same as you would plug in an electric range.
Correct.
So they make a structure that has a bathroom and a bedroom, and, but that doesn't have a stove in it, so it doesn't qualify as an ADU, they don't have to do the permitting, and then somewhere later on down the line, you know that that becomes a non-conforming ADU.
Yep.
So, you know, it's that kind of thing that we'll look at when we get to this more comprehensively. Thank you, Planner Fields, for getting us through this part of it. I hope it didn't feel too rushed, but I think to comply with the very straightforward requirements of the state is simple compared to getting into the more complex requirements of doing this, and then the bigger, the larger discussion of what impact this will have on the community. I, I referenced the AARP document. I'd like to order copies of that and do a presentation at the senior center sometime and talk to some of the older adults in our community who own homes, who are concerned about the rise in their property taxes and the inability, really, to make any money off the property they already own. If your, if your home that you own is your, is a primary asset of your wealth, you'd like it to be able to generate some income for you, and this is one way that that could happen for some people.
So I know we're not going to go through 17.78 tonight. I would like to make some recommendations so that if this is brought before us to review next time, maybe we have some updates to it.
Okay.
If that'd be possible.
So you have some, are you on a reference of that, the page 327?
So the first one's on 327.
Okay.
Section 2. So in this particular one, I think that we need to update this to not preclude telecommuting. The idea here, I am assuming, is for things like hiring a whole bunch of contract workers, but the way it's wording would prohibit, like, a telecommuting agency from working out of there, just using an online computer. On 328, number 11, similar, this one says personal contact may be permitted, but I think we need to replace that with in-person contact to not prohibit online as well.
Okay.
328, number 13 and 15 both. Both of those have outdated wording, we just need to update it to allow online as, as a possible option as well. And then on 329, Sections 2 and 4, I'd like to update the city administrator or his designated to be gender neutral.
Actually, there's a need for that throughout the entire code and the city charter as well, but...
So maybe we could have those updated before it's brought before us next time to review, that would be helpful.
I'm not sure if this will be in front of you in March, or if it will be part of the larger audit. But, thank you.
Well taken. I appreciate, Malakai, always that your awareness of technical issues and new technology informs the way you look at the code. Sometimes I forget, growing up in the era I did, that the world has changed a lot, and as you made, mentioned last time about energy efficiency, you know, some of the simplified ways that we describe it in our, in our code and our comprehensive plan are a little bit out of date now, and we know a lot more, and we could, that could be reflected later. All right. I think we made good progress on, on, on a very complicated issue, and it's a good start, and...
And we've got a really good start for when we have our work session with city council, too.
All right. Well, and that brings us to the next item on the agenda, the discussion of our annual work plan. When we have that joint work session, we will try to share with them where we want to focus our plan. If you look at the very last page of your agenda tonight, we have kind of a quick summary of the things that we brought up last month. Let's look at this a little more closely. Obviously, addressing affordable housing, we're looking at one aspect of addressing that by looking at the ADU code. There was also, we made a little bit of reference tonight about the House Bill 2001 requirements for duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. That will also be something that will require some change in our code, because back in around 1999 or 2000, we did eliminate duplexes in the R5 zone in Gladstone. I looked up the history, I don't think it was by initiative, I think it was by petition from citizens, you know...
I believe it was a petition.
And it encouraged the city council to adopt some changes that, that made that, that eliminated that. But that is no longer legal, so we will have to go back and change that as well. Well, you will, you will be bringing us, or someone will be bringing us some language to do that at that time. Implementation of elements of Gladstone revitalization. Is, is Mr. Southgate still working with us in that capacity of, of helping with these things?
What Mr. Southgate is doing is being, he's the one that's been applying for the grant funding to help us finish the housing code audit and the housing needs analysis. That's really the scope of his work at this point, right now. The other piece of that, what I alluded to in my weekly report, is that we are working with Kittleson to get updated numbers on Portland Avenue street improvements, because that project, which is almost $6 million, is going to be folded into the T2020 metro funding package, and so that's kind of the staff-level work that we are right now, is getting updated numbers for that. But in regards to downtown revitalization, those are the only elements that we have staff resources to complete.
Okay. And as I recall, because I was on the downtown revitalization Citizens Advisory Committee, and then on the city council when it was approved, the bulk of that cost related to converting a portion of Portland Avenue to what's called Plaza Street Design or something, basically much wider sidewalks, narrower street, lower curbs, some, some major infrastructure changes to the streetscape.
Correct.
On that. Some of the other portions of Portland Avenue, further distance from the, the central business core, involve some changes, but not as costly for those particular blocks.
Correct.
Adding bicycle lanes, or, I mean, bicycle striping for bike lanes and maybe sidewalk improvements or something, but not, the, the real, the real cost, the real heavy cost parts are in the blocks immediately adjacent to us here.
Yes.
Okay. I think you mentioned earlier you had something you thought you wanted to add to this.
Yeah, we talked about it at the beginning of the meeting, the notification requirements.
Thank you, Jackie.
I think it'd be worth us reviewing and updating those.
Okay.
Just at the beginning of this meeting, we, I asked how many of us had actually seen the notification in the paper, and only one person on this council had, and I know that we're not necessarily representative of the entire community, but if only one of us had seen it, then that means a large, large number of the community might not have seen it as well, and so I just think it's worth us revisiting what our notification requirements are, and maybe we need to do something to improve that.
Okay. And I noticed that one of the things that you included in the online agenda attachments for this meeting tonight were copies of the things that we were issued at the ethics training that was done in January, the orientation for, for committee members and...
Board members.
Board members. And one of the things there, I've lost my train of thought, oh, was the, it was the social media policy, too. To what extent can we or should we rely on social media as public notification? Does it meet requirements under the law? Does the city want to use that as a source? So that could be part of the same discussion.
It could be part of the discussion, but in general, it would not be enough to comply with the law in itself, but there isn't anything that would prohibit the city from using it as an extra means of notification.
Well, I understood that was your point. It's one thing to meet the minimum requirement, and, and people say, well, you know, if I know where to look, I'll see it, but the more we do, the more we are likely to get But the more we do, the more we are likely to get the public input that we really want and the community involvement that we want. So we could certainly examine ways of involving the public to a greater degree. Other thoughts about this list of items for, for discussion with the city council?
I have a question for our planner. These ADU requirements, have, are any of our surrounding communities farther down the road than we are in adopting regulations? I know that's a real broad question, but the things about the, not so much the parking as that state mandated, but as far as owner occupied and those types of things, have Milwaukee, Oregon City, Happy Valley, West Lynn, anybody like that done anything with these?
There are a number of communities that have started looking at the middle housing issue and addressing that. They have chosen to address it in a variety of ways, many of which did not focus on ADUs. And so there's a, they, Beaverton, Tiger, Milwaukee, they have all done different things to address middle housing. Tiger did transitional communities. Milwaukee got a grant from Metro to look at the cluster housing development regulations. Beaverton has done a lot with a variety of things. Portland has done ADUs. So there are a lot of examples out there.
Well, my concern is, is if somebody has, has already invented the wheel, then it's working. Maybe you could let us know what that wheel is. It may be adaptable here.
Okay.
I, I would add that we hear references to Milwaukee because it's right up the street. Milwaukee's got hundreds of millions of, of light rail rolling through it and.
So does Beaverton.
I'm not dismissing Milwaukee as, as a reference, but what they're doing is a different world. And so we're, when we look at, when we say who else is doing something, we need to look at who else, who's somewhat like us is doing something if, if they are indeed. And I'm sure they are, that we're all addressing it. But again, Milwaukee is a bit of a unique, I'll just say it's a very unique case, and we'll let it go at that.
The state also has recommendations for language that I can send to you all.
Great.
Okay, that would be good.
All right. Are there other things that have occurred to you since our last meeting that you'd like to add to the list of items that could be objectives for our work plan for 2020?
I think this is big.
Yeah, this is a lot.
Yeah, especially the code revisions we're going to be looking at, because I think we're going to have to go way deep.
Well, and it's, I, I'm just grateful that we have staff to work on that and, and a grant that we've obtained to help us work through that. That's very important.
I would just add that we had an extensive conversation about transportation when I suggested adding it previously. And we've got the word transportation down, we've got the word parking.
Okay, say a little more then.
Yeah, I would just say that regional connectivity constraints that we have, and when I use the word constraints, I refer to the fact that we have a limited number of bridges. We have rivers on two sides. So we've got geographic constraints that typically get not enough attention when we think about transportation and how folks are going to get around. I, you know, we've got a growing congestion problem and some of Metro's solutions are working in some places, but what Metro's transportation plan is for Gladstone, I would say, is sorely lacking. So we, we have a transportation problem that's growing. And if we don't focus on the big picture, all of the nice things we're doing in this community will be compromised.
So do I gather that your, your position on the extension of light rail to Oregon City from Milwaukee has changed from what it was a few years ago when you actively campaigned against it?
Not at all.
Not at all, okay.
And by the way, we don't need to get too far in the weeds. I actively campaigned against the ridiculous idea of bootstrapping a line beyond Milwaukee into the county. I certainly did never campaign against the Milwaukee Light Rail Line. And that's a discussion we'll have sometime. It's a very shorted sad tale, so we'll save it.
So you thought it should, you thought taking it to Milwaukee was fine with the all that?
It had nothing to do with what I thought. Nothing with what I thought.
I will agree.
What mattered was that the light rail line, I know our, at some point, our staff are going to just pass up and listening to this. I don't blame them. But since the light rail came up, we're obviously not a light rail community now. So what Milwaukee is doing is tailored to that. And the opposition to light rail was based on the fact that the extension beyond Milwaukee to Clackamas County over the top of the trolley trail and the 25 million that we were going to contribute got us exactly one parking garage. All the rest of it wasn't even in Clackamas County. There wasn't even a legitimate process for that project. So, yeah, I fought real hard and we made sure we got a vote on the ballot now. So when they go to do one of these things, the citizens will weigh in. And when we weigh in, we don't have that kind of nonsense. Yeah.
Our current version of mass transit is Uber and Lyft.
Uber and Lyft, ah, you think, okay.
I honestly use it more than TriMet.
I think people down here use buses as well. If we, as you talked about Milwaukee doing things built around the presence of, of the light rail, we could also look at things built around the presence of buses. I hear positive statements from people who live in this part of the city say, I have access to three different bus lines within walking distance of my home. So there are some people who, who do appreciate the extent to which TriMet is involved here in, in transit. But whether, whether a train would be needed beyond that is something else.
One of them costs $168 million for a half a mile and the other one doesn't.
Right. All right. Any more business from the public tonight? Business from the planning commission. Can we start with Commissioner Smith?
Yes. Give me just a second to get back to that piece. In number five on our planning commission work objectives for 2020, nuisance, code revisions in relationship to nuisances and membrane structures. We passed, we didn't pass something. We gave a recommendation that city council.
They passed it.
And they passed it.
With some grandfathering of things that were already.
Grandfathering existing. But I saw one that was brand new and I dropped a note to Officer Boyle and here was his response. This doesn't have anything to do with Officer Boyle. He's, he's simply following what he's told, what he's required to do. It says, "It was recently discovered that the new ordinance that was intended to regulate membrane structures is unenforceable. The new ordinance was written by county planning and the section of the code that it was written under limits its enforcement only when the structure is subject to design review." Design review is not applicable to temporary structures that are under 400 square feet. So basically whatever came through here and went to the city council to get passed is, doesn't work. So we need to be careful if we do this over again to make sure that these things that we pass are workable and enforceable.
That's helpful information. Thank you.
And I appreciate Officer Boyle being very specific in, in how he worded his response to me.
Mr. Williams, do you have any, any other things? Thank you for being the new eyes and ears on this, on this commission. Because it is important for, among the people who have been doing this for a while, we need to hear things from a different perspective or need to hear the way, you know, a citizen in the community might be hearing it for the first time. So I appreciate your involvement and input and bringing those, that new, new perspective on things.
Thank you.
Mr. Poole?
Yeah.
Very briefly, the Metro T2020 transportation plan was mentioned as a possible source for funding Portland Avenue. And I, I intended to bring that bond measure up this evening because there hasn't been much discussion in the community about what it means and what's going on. And to, to cut to the chase, in 2018, Metro passed the affordable housing measure. I should say they put the bond measure on and voters passed it. At the time, there was about 1.8 billion in transportation bonding that they were planning on. And they decided to wait another year or two because it was more critical that they addressed the housing issue. So it, by, at the start of 2019, we began on a process which was approximately $900 million for congestion, traffic congestion relief, and about $900 million bonded for the Southwest Light Rail. And since that time, it's morphed into a $3 billion bond measure and about $3 billion or at least $2 billion in fees, taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm very troubled by what I'm seeing and hearing. And the unfortunate part about it is that that bond measure, if it goes to the ballot in its current form, it'll probably get a lot of resistance. If it's turned down by the voters in November, the good parts of it, because obviously, I'm not saying it's all bad, all go out the door. So I, I would strongly recommend that all of you get versed on what's going on because it's turned into a giant monster that's way off course and Metro's responsible for that. So I think that, that we're missing the boat if we don't address the Metro T2020 plan in a bigger way. And if that plan passes, well, we got $6 million for downtown, which is great. Might have some money for the trolley bridge, which is great. But if it passes, what else do we get when we're borrowing $3 billion? So if that bond measure's going to pass, it needs to be whittled down and presented to the citizens in a way where they can digest it, or we're going to lose the good part of it. So let's all seriously look at what's going on there. It is very important. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your views on that. Malachi?
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind everybody up here that if you took notes on your notebook here, that for our lawyer, it's a new public document. You need to either keep it or mail a copy of it to yourself at your city email address. And Jackie, you were going to get us notebooks. I want to remind you about that.
Great.
Okay. So, yeah, so just reminding everybody, anything you took notes on is new public document.
So just scan it and.
Yeah, you email it to yourself. That will have a public, that'll have a record kept with the city.
But you can retain it in a file folder without having to do that, right?
Yeah, you can keep it locally or you have the city backing up for you.
Just don't shred it.
Yeah, don't get rid of what you've written on.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
I have nothing this evening.
Commissioner Langston?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. Well, I will say, I'm, I'm still new at this. I would hope that in future, our conversations could be a little more regulated from the chair, a little less free form. I, I like the input that we're getting, particularly from people who see things from a multitude of perspectives. But we have what could be a pretty substantial work plan ahead of us for the year. And we'll try to move things along a little smoother, respect the time of staff who come here and, and work together well as a commission. I hope you'll agree to do that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
All right. Commissioner Langston, Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.